Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown O'Leary. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the January 25th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. My prayer for today is the Proverbs 5:1. "My son, pay attention to my wisdom; listen carefully to my wise counsel, then you will show discernment and your lips will express what you've learned." And Commissioner Kalo has our dog from the kennel this morning.
Hey, hey, come on, look at you, come on, yeah, come on, come on, let's go, come on, he'll find you home. Oh, there you go. You okay there? All right, good luck there. Our featured dog this week is a three-year-old female beagle. She was found in South Amherst. She's got a great personality. How many other dogs we have?
Thirty-one.
We have thirty-one other dogs, but she'll make a great pet for somebody extremely friendly. Come here, come here. But she's available for adoption today and if she's not quite what you're looking for, we've got plenty more. Come on, let's go. Come on.
Let me see if they can get away from you like that my dog did last week.
She doesn't like that leash though.
No, she wants to run. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions, we do not have investments of corporations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I'll be abstaining from requisition 320.
Okay.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam President. Doesn't that sound really good, Madam President?
It does.
I do have a few issues this morning, pending legal matters, potential hires, job and family services, 911. I also want to update you on something we have been discussing, United Auto Workers negotiations at job and family services, and possibly a potential sale of real estate. All of those topics are allowed under Sunshine Act for executive session discussions, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular meeting, we go into executive session and discuss those matters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the minutes of January 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Support the Ohio Transportation Equity Coalition. We urge the State of Ohio to invest 10% or greater of its transportation budget in public transportation for Ohio residents.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, we've had discussions about this in the past, our concerns here locally about the lack of support from the state of Columbus, State of Ohio in Columbus, for transit throughout the state of Ohio. A coalition has been formed, the Ohio Transportation Equity Coalition. Just to give you an idea, some of the members of that, the Ohio Developmental Disabilities Council, the City of Lorraine's even involved, national churches are involved in the state, their own move organization is involved, the Catholic Social Services, women's organizations, just the list goes on and on and on. They formed the Ohio Transportation Equity Coalition. As we've brought up in the past, and the Department of Transportation, ODOT, has been extremely silent on, in fact, I don't think I've heard them actually utter a word about it, but they conducted their own study in 2015, and I would encourage people to go online and find it, it is online. That study basically showed that Ohio has great transit needs. The state of Ohio needs 192.4 million in capital investments and 96.7 million in operating funds. That's just to meet existing demand for public transportation service. So keep that 96 million that's needed just to meet existing demand for public transportation in mind, as I tell you that the state of Ohio currently funds about $7.3 million towards public transit. That's 1% of a $7 billion transit budget. The coalition is asking that the states start to get on the right track to help with public transit in Ohio for numerous reasons. A lot of folks in the state do not own a car. We have a very high poverty rate in this state. People need to be able to get to work, and we talk about jobs and wanting to get people off of public assistance, and as we've said before, you can either pay for public assistance or you can pay for public transit. So you make that decision. But these are dollars that come to Ohio currently, and sadly, because of our meager investment, Ohio now ranks 47th out of all states. That's not a category you want to be in because of our whopping 1% investment out of $7 billion to transit. So we're just simply asking that we start to get on the right track. If we invested that 10%, we'd be up around $70 million. That, as I stated earlier, would still fall short of ODOT's own transit study that shows that 96.7 million just in operating funds alone are needed to meet the current demand. I know that my colleague, Commissioner Kalo, has been to a number of national conferences on this, and you know how poorly we look nationally.
Yeah, very much. They did though, ODOT did last year, they would take 13 million discretionary money for fill-in for capital projects across the state. That's not saying a whole lot when you tie into the couple hundred million for capital, but yeah, significant needs we have, our community in particular, and moving people around, again, to get into the whole, what's it cost to have a car and insurance and maintenance and fuel? So yeah, they need to start moving more money into the transportation for public versus just in the hallway, you know, highways and bridges and expanding. When you get crazy things happen like 77 in Akron because if there wasn't any development and there was no volume, they actually took a lane out that was put in 15 years ago. So you wasted millions of dollars taking it out. Now they're selling the property to someone to do a retail development on. So planning, planning, you know, that whole 10-year, 20-year, 50-year, look what our communities are going to look like, we've not done a very good job of. But let's see what happens if they increase it at all.
They, you know, the studies are out there to talk about the millennials and, you know, I know my own nephew, he told me, he said, you know, when I finally end up going into the workforce, he's in grad school now, he said, I want to be someplace where I can use public transit, where I can walk or bike to work, and you know, it's a big push on the part of millennials. Even the statistics are showing that the upcoming generations, I sound like an old man here, but the upcoming generations, fewer and fewer, are really eager to get out there and even to get a license just to drive.
Well, just the whole cost of it, again, they're going wherever, that's why you have Columbus as a booming area, there's so much money tied into transportation down there, and then there's a shortfall up here, RTAs, you know, looking at multi-millions of dollars of shortfall in revenues. Because those people are earning dollars and the companies that hire them have all moved to places that have sufficient public transportation.
But this is the appropriate window for us to, you know, send this down to Columbus because they're starting discussions here on the transportation budget. I think they generally will have that approved in March, have that approved long before the state budget, but it's one of the first things that rolls out, and you know, it's important to invest in infrastructure, no question about that, that creates a lot of jobs, but there's an important component here of actually getting people to work as well, too.
Significant issue. Let's hope they look at it.
I think the governor's supposed to come out Monday with his budget, so we should know more then on Monday, so.
Well, actually, your way of transportation's budget is standalone.
Standalone.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Isn't part of your general fund budget, it's actually standalone, unlike education.
Which is supposed to be giving more money, too. And as a side note, last week we had a gentleman here to talk about buses, school buses and seatbelts in buses, and it was actually on the news this morning on Channel 8 talking about it, and it was like the subject of the day, people were calling in and writing in about that subject, so it's getting a lot more press.
Yeah, it's an important issue.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Enter into contract with Environmental Design Group to Great Lorraine County Lakefront Connectivity Plan to improve connectivity of lakefront communities for Vermilion, Lorraine, Sheffield Lake, and Avon Lake with Lake Erie and Lorraine County Metro Parks.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just would like to discuss, I guess, a little bit more in detail. This is an exciting project, and I can't thank my colleagues enough, the board has been in total support of this initiative. You know, there's been talk in the past, only talk, about what we should do with our lakefront communities and trying to connect our lakefront communities and draw more people to the lakefront. You know, it's often said that the lake is one of our great assets, however, it's also one of our great liabilities because, you know, when you draw that big circle for commerce and business, the fish don't exactly show up at Ted's Carpet Store or any businesses, you know, to buy any of the products. But the whole idea is to try to connect our lakefront communities so that we have more tourism, we have more commerce activity going on there, and this has been a great partnership between the county and our lakefront communities of Vermilion, Lorraine, Sheffield Lake, and Avon Lake, and obviously, when you get activity up near the lakefront, that kind of carries over into other communities within the county and it gets people in here. But looking at it in a, you know, a multifaceted approach, obviously through transit initiatives, through trails as well, too, but also looking at it through an economic development lens and getting more people to our lakefront. So this is a grant that the county went after, along with another grant, we were successfully at a transit planning grant that you'll be hearing more about in the weeks ahead. But this was an $86,000 grant that was awarded to us. The Commissioners were making an investment of $1,000. The Metro Parks are making another investment of $1,000. This total contract is for $87,991.41, and it will...
Forty-one cents, thank goodness for that.
Yeah, exactly, make sure you get forty-one cents in there. But there's going to be a lot of community engagement, and that's going to be the exciting part, when we actually go out into the community and meet with members of the public, and you know, you don't necessarily have to live in a lakefront community to participate in any of these public engagement meetings that will take place, but they will be held in the lakefront communities, obviously with the focus being on our lakefront and things that the community would like to see and residents of the county would like to see. And you know, this is going to be exciting, very exciting. There's going to be five community engagements that will take place. We're hoping to see the plan back from the Environmental Design Group by late in the year, probably somewhere around November, and then we'll be able to then look at implementation grants hopefully in the future, but you've got to start with the planning grant first. So this is excited, we're excited about this, this is something we've kind of called a lakefront Lorraine County initiative, but Mayor Zilka and Mayor Bring and Chase Rittenhour and everybody, just all the mayors involved have just been fabulous in working with us on this, and I can't thank Mike Challander enough, I can't thank Don and everybody in Community Development, and Jerry Good's been working with us on it, and Jerry reviewed the contract the other week, our legal counsel, and the county administrator's been guiding it as well, too. So it's just been a real team effort, and now comes the fun part of actually doing the, I guess you could say, the visioning of where we'd like to see things go.
And you can't forget the staff in the WAC, the five county MPOs who through their programming, the Transportation for Liberal Communities Initiative is how we ended up getting this money, so through local area, our five county region.
And I'll give you a pat on the back here because you changed that program when you were president, you made it possible for it to be 100% grant, which it used to be, what, 80, 20?
Correct, and it limited a lot of distressed communities from participating, so.
So thanks for saving us some money through re-altering or changing around that initiative, and as I said, you know, we'll be announcing in the weeks ahead, the other initiative that we're working on, and that's the Transportation Planning Grant, but for now, it's exciting that we're actually going to be moving forward and looking at how to connect residents and people from outside our county to our lakefront region.
And we established the implementation money, which never in the past was, all these plans set on people's shelves because they had no way to do them. Now we have the grant process, so once this goes through, we can apply for money to help implement the plan.
Right.
So extremely important.
You're actually doing some good work when you're going down there every Friday.
That's why I travel so much.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey? Aye.
Approve change order number two in the amount of $17,531 to NNN Construction for additional waterproofing for the historical courthouse renovation project, Phase One.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, Jim, couldn't we just get that stuff that sprays on, sort of like they show on TV, the waterproof things?
Excuse me, I was doing something important here. What was your question?
Talking about the waterproofing of our historic courthouse.
I've seen the commercial.
The $17,000 change, can't we just get that one, you know, where they spray the inside of a boat with holes on?
We could, but I don't think it comes in clear coat. I think it comes in white and black, so if you chose a color, we'll certainly give it a little bit of a try. Let me explain a little bit on this, I'm glad you brought it up now that we've had a little fun.
The public's watching this, so it's been tore up and we've had, you know, it's an old building.
Well, I wouldn't say it's tore up, it's under renovation.
Under renovation.
We ran into a bit of a stumbling block, and I think an update is in order. Past renovations, nobody ever dug up, no one ever took the foundation into consideration and then dug around the foundation and put in proper drainage tiles around the footers and also backfill with gravel and rock so that you had the water coming up to the courthouse from percolating in the soil down to a footetile and pumped off or drained off. There it'll drain off, there's some deep storm sewers, so there's really not much of a problem. So the water was just penetrating the sandstone in the block. We really didn't intend on doing it at first, and I talked to the architects about what we should do to secure the foundation for another 50-plus years, and nobody thought that there was any footetile, and we were right, there was no footetile, and on top of that, the block itself had never been sealed, and I doubt it was sealed when it was built, and it was never sealed any time during any of the subsequent renovations, so that's what we're doing. We picked a process, and it's very much like the sealant you're talking about in the can, a little bit more complicated than that, but essentially similar. They did an adhesion test on several portions of the foundation and on a section of it, we just couldn't get the product to adhere properly in the test strips, so the company wouldn't warranty the product. They would install it, but they wouldn't warranty it specifically in that area, but they didn't want to warranty any of the foundation from the waterproofing. We had to do an investigation backup, find additional product that could meet our demands. We did. Fortune's a little bit more expensive, but I think we really need to coat that block while we're putting the footetile and the gravel fill in, so we'll have two levels of protection around the foundation. The stress on this was that the foundation's been dug up, and we were worried about the foundation heaving from the cold weather. I'm really, really happy, we haven't had that much significant cold weather like we had the couple of years back, but we did put some protective blanketing around the footers to keep the warmth from the earth coming up hitting onto the footers and the bottom blocks. People don't realize that, but if you dig up your foundation, you leave it, even though it's below the frost line, it'll still freeze and the potential for heaving is still significant, so we really had to pay attention to that. This coating can be applied in most weather conditions, so we're going to get some work going pretty quick once we get this resolution done. Also, as you know, and as an update, we went out twice for bids for the courthouse work. We were unsatisfied the first time with the bids. Second time, the bids weren't actually much better. We had to go back, we had to look at, do more research on this historical renovation and why some of the costs were higher than we anticipated, and it has to do with the very nature of the courthouse structure and how it has to be worked around, so we're revising some estimates and we're getting ready to go back out to bid a third time. Some of the estimates, quite frankly, didn't take into consideration the difficulty of working inside that building, plus, we really haven't spoken much to this, but we added to complete the third floor of the courthouse, which isn't a floor right now, it's a partial floor, in fact, it was more balcony floor in the back that they used. So that's all going to be properly built, it was never properly built at the time, and then it's going to be built out across the whole courthouse. That's going to necessitate bringing the courthouse to building codes, standard building codes, which require sprinkler system. I actually thought we probably would have had to put the sprinkler system in anyway because of the significant amount of renovation, but this really did trigger that completely. As you know, we're trying to go without booster pumps, which, you know, they could run 60,000 to 80,000 with the booster pumps for the sprinkler system. We have tested the water pressure in downtown O'Leary on several different occasions, we're borderline with being able to maintain the proper head pressure to run the sprinkler system. I think we'll be okay, but when they put the sprinkler system, I'm going to have them put an easy access to later installed booster pumps if we need them so that the piping is already prepared for that addition. That's a really small cost, but it'll save a lot of costs later on to do that. I think the water pressure in O'Leary will be fine, but if there's more building and there's more construction and things like that, when we come out and they test and the pressure's just a little bit too low, they won't certify our system, so I think we need to prepare that. So we're going to have some additional costs, plus, we added a lot of work to the project as we went along to genuinely bring this building 50 years more into the future. It's going to be beautiful when it's done, and you've chosen to bring it back to as best of its former glory as we could, so we're going to see a lot of activity around the foundation, hopefully the bids will be out and we'll see a lot more activity in March, once we get the bid back.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey? Aye.
Community Development, award grant in amount of $10,000 to Allen Anderson, 238 Church Street, Amherst, for downtown renovations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey? Aye.
Under EMA Homeland Security, approve and enter into specialized response team contracts effective retroactive to January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2021. Contract fee is based on census population by jurisdiction at a rate of 31 cents per capita with an increase of 1 cent per year with all Lorraine County cities, townships, and villages participating.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under the Engineering, Reimber City of Lorraine, as proceeds of grant agreement received from state for LOR 57, 2264, State Route 57 reconstruction project through TID. This was to improve and revitalize commercial downtown district on State Route 57 corridor. Cost was $2,611,766 with $250,000 from TID.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Can I just add one comment? Most people don't know what a TID is.
Transportation Improvement District.
The, just for explanation, you know, we are trying to do a better job here of, you know, getting information out. The Lorraine County Commissioners formed the Transportation Improvement District several years ago in conjunction with County Engineer Ken Carney. The work of the engineers has been really spectacular, working with the Board of Commissioners. The Commissioners and Mr. Carney constitute, and myself constitute, the Board of the Transportation Improvement District. Ken works with the communities, brings suggested projects to the table. The Transportation Improvement District funds that we normally get about $250,000 a year, one year we got $500,000, is used for bringing in the last piece of the funding puzzle with these projects around the community. This is the four corners of Lorraine County. We've done projects in the unincorporated area, we've done projects in the incorporated area, and a lot of times we try to do those projects that have a significant economic development component to it to bring businesses, and as you talked earlier about the infrastructure, there's a lot of infrastructure that's needed for businesses to locate here. A lot of people don't know you do that, just like your Stormwater District you're going to talk about later, your Transportation Improvement District, all of this is work of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, and usually in conjunction with other departments like the County Engineer, et cetera. That goes well under the radar screen and it's not really understood or appreciated by most folks.
And the reason for the change, though, now, is it's a competitive process. It used to be we got awarded dollars based on our population and such standard, so we had it every year, now it's a competitive product, so we have to discuss the projects accordingly, on which have the best chance of getting funded, whether it's Lear Road in North Ridgeville, or it was to spur the Ford plant expansion a couple of years ago, redoing Oster Road, you know, what best would reflect when it goes down to Central Office of ODOT in Columbus.
As you know, we really haven't gotten very far on our airport spur road because it's not, it doesn't really point as well as those other projects because there's more activity going on there, and you're right, we have to, we very much have to pick the best project we think that will gain attention from the funding source so that we can get those funds here. I can't thank Rob Kleiber and Ken Carney enough for working with us on this. Quite frankly, without them, I'm not sure we'd be able to complete this work. It's a really good collaborative partnership, and it brings resources to Lorraine County that are very greatly needed. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just think we need to make an explanation on that.
Also the changes in the program from when we first got here, again, we were able to do studies on things and look at things, like we were looking at that north-south corridor again back in '06, '07, it didn't score high enough, but we had dollars to do those things.
Correct.
You know, now it's all based on what's the economic development component, what's the jobs component, so you're not allowed to do planning to move your community forward down the road, again, that 10-year look, if we did that spur road from the county airport out to Route 20, you know, to move vehicles in and out, you know, freight for our industrial park that doesn't have anything on it, that's been around for 20 years, but designated as an industrial park. It's for projects that are in the works to get going now based on jobs and economic development component, which works either way, but it just sort of takes, it's competitive, so we're competing against everybody in the state when it comes to getting those dollars, so.
Perfect.
Reimber City of Avon, as proceeds of grant agreement received from state for Chester Road reconstruction project through, this was to improve the mobility and safety for vehicle and pedestrian traffic along commercial corridor of Chester, from Jay Cox to, well, it was proposed, Cabela, but Cabela's there now. Cost was $6,886,312 with $250,000 from TID.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Approve and enter an LPA agreement with ODOT to address safety concerns on Columbia West River Road, authorize engineer to execute on behalf of the Board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Advertise bids for various highway materials, notice being the journal on January 27th and February 3rd, and open at 2:00 PM on February 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, I need to ask for an advance in, advance out, and appropriation. We have some CDBG-15 money that we need to pay back to the general fund, we need to advance it, we need to pay the advance back to the general fund, but then I need it immediately advanced into the CDBG-16 funds.
Money in, money out.
Well, this is another thing that people don't recognize when they talk about, you know, the funds, these, we're on a pay and hope somebody pays us back method of doing things with most federal funds. You have to pay out the money, you have to then submit for the draws and wait for them to agree and then reimburse you while you have all this cash flow that you've got to take care of, and CDBG is one prime example of that, where you usually have several hundreds of thousands of dollars tied up in CDBG projects that the county advances money to, to out this community.
Community development block grant.
Correct. The only communities that we're not actively working in because they're entitlement cities is O'Leary and Lorraine. As you know, we picked up North Ridgeville, uh, some time ago, so we're, we're covering, uh, most of the incorporated areas outside of the two core cities and all the unincorporated areas, and, and at times we can have four, five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars flowing in and out of CDBG funds that we gotta keep cash flow for. Hence the need for a carryover at times to fund those programs, and we're not the, this is not the only grant program like that that you help maintain. It's, it, mo, you know, the courts have them, adult probation has them, we have them. Uh, so I just wanted a way of explanation, since it was a simple thing I'm asking for, I just wanted to explain that this, this money really doesn't exist or the program stops. We can never take this money and go pay a bill with it like people think. Or the program no longer exists. So with that, I'll pass this down to the clerk, it's, it's a standard, uh, uh, advance pay, uh, advance payback to the general fund and then, and advance back into this next year's CDBG, and an appropriation in that account, so that we can spend on it.
Motion to approve the advance.
Second.
Just advance, there's more to it.
It's, it's a, it's a, it's a pay, payback of an advance.
Appropriation and an advance, right.
And then an advance back in.
Okay.
From fif, it's for, it's a payback from the fifteen CDBG to the general fund. And the general fund's re-advancing fifty thousand to the sixteen CDBG, and then we're appropriating in the sixteen CDBG account so that it can be drawn upon.
Say that three times fast.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Or Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye. I got both points.
Can he go Democrat?
Just, just as an aside, I, uh, I had a rating call with, uh,
Yeah, how did that go?
They love us now, or we?
Well, you know, they downgraded us about a year and a half ago. Uh, so they, they actually requested the rating. We didn't ask for the rating. Quite frankly, you know, with everything that's been going on with, with various revenue situations, I, last thing I wanted to do was call the rating agencies and have conversation, but I've been putting them off since the fall. I, I think it went well, uh, they got a new stress model they're using, I, I don't agree with, uh, with the, probably the, the, um, the sets, the logical sets that they're using on it. They have us, uh, actually on a downward spiral if the GDP takes a one percent change and things like that. They're really starting to get complicated models in this, and, and as I told them, I said, it doesn't take into consideration maneuvering to deal with a downturn in either revenue or uptick in expenses. I, I really couldn't figure out where they're going, I thought the question and answer went very, very well, it was a very positive session. But you, you know, in the last several years, the rating agencies have become so restrictive and so tight. We stopped using Fitch because we were, we seemed to be able to maintain our rating, um, easily with, with Moody's, and Moody's is the big player. I think that in the spring, uh, for the first time in a long time, I wanna re-engage Standard and Poor's and, and maybe do a rating with Standard and Poor's. They're, they're right up there with Moody's, we used, we used Fitch because they were the only ones rating port authorities in the early two thousands, so we, we started using them for the county and the port authority. But they almost single-handedly put the port authorities out of business when they pulled all the ratings and wouldn't rate them anymore, and they had requirements, they had to have so many deals, so many, and they were the only rating agency that was in that market at the time, and it wasn't just Lorraine County, it was all the smaller, small port authorities all over Ohio. They almost wanted us to have one hundred percent reserves to do a bond issue to, to support a company or, or an expansion and, and, or building here. So, we never quite used them as our prime rating agency anyway, but they did have a rating call, we do have some bonds that were rated from them in the two thousands. And I'll let you know how it went, I, I, I think overall I'm looking for a positive experience, but recognizing that their model is very tough. So I'll talk to you more about the Standard and Poor's in the spring. We're gonna have a lot of bond issuance next year, we got a lot of, a lot of notes that are maturing in the fall that we need to go to permanent financing, probably sitting on six or seven million dollars worth of, of notes, some of them are sewer projects, revenue bonds, uh, capital improvements bonds, and of course, uh, it's too premature, but we'll have a better idea on the courthouse, uh, what we wanna do with some of the funding there. And, um, and also, uh, while we're looking at nine-one-one, we're working on the equipment upgrade right now, that's gonna be several millions of dollars. We do have some cash to put into that, and we did borrow, um, a significant amount to do all the software enhancements that we're still working on and some other projects. So I, I, I really think it's time to engage Standard and Poor's along with Moody's, and, and I will say, this time, because we have so much that we may be doing, I think we're gonna probably need to take a trip there. I used to go there every other year, the familiarity with those folks really paid dividends. But we've been so busy, I just haven't been there in, in the last several years, and now I'm talking, the folks that we were familiar with that knew the county history and they're all moved on, and we haven't really, while we have a rapport on the phone, we haven't really established a rapport sitting in their offices and having some coffee and, and, and just discussing things about, you know, the look forward for Lorraine County, so we'll talk more on that though in the spring. So that's all I really have this morning.
Thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
Uh, I have no report this morning.
Commissioners report.
Uh, first of all, we had our stormwater meeting, uh, first one for the year, and I'm gonna have Don Remanchek come up and talk about, uh, some of the things that we approved, uh, this morning, if you would, Don.
Thank you, Commissioner Kokoski. Today culminates, uh, almost a six-month-long process. Back in August, Stormwater District Board released community applications and notified the townships that we would have at least four hundred thousand dollars available in funds. Uh, the communities went through, selected projects, uh, submitted them by the end of, or by early December to the Stormwater Advisory Committee, uh, and to, uh, the Stormwater Advisory Committee submitted that, uh, to a subcommittee to do a lot of the hard work. That subcommittee actually is Mark McConnell, Rick Carlson, and, uh, Peter Zwick from the Engineers Office, and this time they let me sit in and see how the magic is done. Uh, we had received twenty applications requesting almost seven hundred thousand, uh, or almost eight hundred thousand dollars in funding, about seven hundred ninety-five thousand. The, uh, Commissioners, uh, District Board had also approved taking unspent funds from last year and carrying it over into this year, so by December, we figured we had about four hundred eleven thousand five hundred dollars to, uh, distribute through this program. The, after the review, nine projects were selected, and actually, for the first time, it was in nine different communities. Total are actually, uh, gonna be receiving assistance through the community grant program. Uh, the recommendations were for just over four hundred thousand, four hundred fi, four hundred thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars, and the balance of roughly eleven thousand dollars will be available if we do have some cost overruns, and if not, we will move those over. Uh, the second thing that the Stormwater Advisory Committee had recommended was that there were five projects that looked to be good projects, but they were very small and they were not our typical ditch project, they were culverts. And so conversation was had, and they had recommended that maybe this would be something better for the district itself to take on, and so had made a request to the District Board to have the district do these, and, uh, today, the, uh, Board, you approved all nine projects for the community grants, plus the additional five projects at another twenty-nine thousand dollars. So, uh, we're putting in, the district is putting in four hundred thirty thousand dollars into our local communities, uh, and it is a total of twelve townships are receiving, uh, direct assistance, uh, out of this round between the community grants and these district projects. And that's in addition to all the other district projects that we are currently working on and will continue to develop, such as, uh, stormwater detention basins, uh, log jam removals and other, uh, projects that come up. Uh, so that is, uh, what happened today was, uh, you know, quite an exciting day. In the last really twelve months, uh, the Stormwater Board has invested more than eight hundred thousand in community grants directly into our, uh, district.
We're, we're going to have, uh, again, we, we've been really overtaxed the last few, well, I don't wanna use the word overtax, that's really terrible. We have really been, um,
Overburdened?
Overburdened with a lot of issues, uh, o, over the last several months. Normally, we have a February, late January, early February meeting of the combined Stormwater Advisory Committee and the Stormwater District Boards, and we do a report out to the, to the unincorporated area, because that's where the Stormwater District works. Uh, we're looking to have that late in March this year because of, of, uh, all the pushbacks on the work. So we'll have a lot more to come, we'll, we'll be inviting the media, the township folks, it's always a really good event, it's well-attended, uh, to, uh, let people know what, what we're doing, uh, and, and how the dollars are being reinvested in the community. As we talked about the Transportation Improvement District, let's explain the structure of the Stormwater District and the Commissioners' role in that, because that's distinctly different, just like the Transportation Improvement District, you are a governing body there. You're a governing body on the Stormwater District, which we formed, I wanna say about seven years ago?
Uh, two thousand ten.
The, the, uh, the SWAC is a Stormwater Advisory Committee that's appointed by the Stormwater District Board of, of Commissioners, which you three are the Stormwater District Board of Commissioners. We keep those meetings separate and distinct, and those roles separate, uh, from each other. Uh, the SWAC is comprised of mem, lots of members from the township, metro parks, uh, farm bureau, um, et cetera. It, it's a really a good group of folks, we've really learned to do a lot of good collaborative work together, it's, it's really a pleasing experience. It's a well-attended meeting too, we get a lot of trustees that come to the, to the SWAC meeting, uh, Jerry's there with us all the time, uh, Ken Carney has, uh, Peter, uh, he didn't stay with us, he's, he's there, and, and, um, they do some really exciting things and they bring a lot of things forward. But at the end of the day, it all falls to you three as a Stormwater District to work with them and approve recommendations, you give them the ability to decide where grant money goes in the, in the grant program, but you also have, uh, log jam removing funds, you deal with, uh, emergency flooding situations, you deal with flooding situations, and we, we had that one that we've been working on for three years, we haven't been able to resolve that property issue on a small piece of culvert that, excuse me, of tile that's collapsed on the property. You do, uh, retention and drainage, you, you work on a big project in O'Leary Township right now to eliminate the, the flooding in Sheffield Township specifically at their, at their township hall and fire station. And you're also working to, uh, eliminate some flooding down into the city of Lorraine in collaboration with them, but using, we're working in the township on that project that'll help them. I don't think the public knows a lot about that either, so we need to talk about it a little bit more, we do post things on our website, and we'll have more when the report outcomes.
And this is not general fund money, it's the money that comes from Stormwater District Funds, which is assessed to property owners in the township.
Correct, and we just, we just finished the memo of understanding with the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District for Stormwater Funds in Columbia Township, so we're working, collaborating with them, and we're bringing funds back for those portions of Columbia Township that, that lie in the, uh, Stormwater District of Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer, because as, as you may be aware, it was indicated that the Sewer District and the Stormwater Districts, uh, followed each other over there. So, uh, we had to do some work there, I, I, I think we're doing, uh, we're being rather successful in getting the money back. We got administrative money, we have project money, it's a little more complicated because we have to target a specific region with those funds, we can't blend them like we do with the other district funds. But there's a lot of work there, so a lot of things we, we've been doing, and, and, uh, you guys have done a fabulous job getting the money reintroduced back. We did, we have done more drainage projects in the last five or six years than they did in the last thirty years in this community. And it's, it's vastly needed, it looks like it's an, an endless problem going on, but we're, we're, we're fighting back.
Yep, gotta start somewhere.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks, Don.
You're welcome.
Oh, you can follow us on Facebook, Lorraine County Solid Waste District, correct? And that's solid, Lorraine County Stormwater District.
Correct.
Is on Facebook if you wanna see the, it came up when I read the thing yesterday, it came up, it popped up, said like Lorraine County Stormwater District.
Yep, in fact, we did put, uh, yesterday a list of all the projects that were approved, both as community grants as well as the small district projects, and there will be a press release out there today as well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Uh, what else did we do this week? Thursday, we had our land bank meeting, and yesterday, we had our investment advisory council meeting, and it looks like they're figuring about the same money and interest income this year, so not a big jump.
Then you wanna talk, you don't wanna talk about the land bank, or somebody else can talk about it?
Yeah, you can.
Well, I'll wait for the, your other peers.
There you go, the land bank meeting. I'll go next, uh, our annual meeting we met, uh, talked about our projects going forward, the ones we've completed, especially in regards to the big press we did in the city of Lorraine, get those done before the end of the year, almost all of them completed. Kudos out to the city of Lorraine working with us, all of our land bank people, and all the demolition contractors. Speaking with Chris Pionowski, uh, through the county land bank, they have collected over nine point three seven million dollars in back taxes that haven't been paid. Now, those don't necessarily go to the county, most of those go to our school districts, developmental disabilities, mental health, Lorraine County Community College, and other levies within the communities, but it's nine and a half million dollars we brought back in to support those organizations through the county land bank. We were giving another grant.
We were, uh, we received an additional round of OFA funding. A lot of our discussions centered around at the, at the meeting, well, let's explain what the Commissioners' role in the land bank is. The three Commissioners along with the county treasurer, the mayor of the largest city, and, and a representative from the township, uh, constitute the land bank board, so you formed the land bank, uh, you established it, and you seeded it, uh, a few years back. We somewhat criticized at the time about how we did it, but it's been wildly successful. We've, so you have a responsibility in governing all of that, and the work of the land bank is actually contracted out to the Port Authority, and the Port Authority undertakes the, the work on behalf of the land bank, but under the guidance of the land bank. Uh, that said, um, we received an additional one point two million roughly, uh, on, on additional round OFA funding. I had hoped for more, Commissioner, quite frankly, but nineteen other communities have opened up land banks, they were a little slow to the table, but they saw that was, money was going into the communities.
Well, let me interrupt you there, because actually I was in Columbus the other day, the Commissioners Association, one of those discussions came up with some of my fellow Commissioners that are from around the state, and some of the smaller ones opened up. The largest one I heard was four point three million dollars, because they changed the rules on land banks, they let anybody open them up, you no longer had to have a population component.
Correct.
So a lot of those dollars on the awarding, where they normally would've come back to us larger ones from Cuyahoga, Lucas, uh, Franklin, Montgomery, Hamilton, Lorraine, Stark, Summit, got watered down because of the other land banks that are now, and, and not that they don't have the needs, so, but there's less dollars to go around.
Sure, we're getting, we're getting a thinner slice of the pie, because the pie has more people it needs to feed. Uh, we were still successful in getting more money, but going forward, the, the additional funding is going to narrow, uh, for all land banks. But I was still glad we received additional funding, because if you're not, if you're not achieving success, you will not get more funding. Uh, so I was, I was happy with that, we're well in excess of four hundred homes now that, that we've done, I just got, I was just looking through paperwork from Lorraine uh, on another one that they want to, uh, do an emergency demo on. I'm working with Chris, we're, we're going now on the liens, we wanna decide what liens for demolition are, potentially, we could pursue for collection because there's resources that can be collected upon. Uh, some of them are gonna be non-existent, we're not, we, we just need to make a list of those that have potential and those that don't move past them. Uh, but, but remember how all the conversation we had, we have ongoing maintenance concerns on a lot of properties. The OFA funds require us to take ownership of the property, so those are all of ours, and, and some of the ones that are leaned up are not gonna be, uh, the taxes are not gonna be paid, the liens are not gonna be cleared, so we'll take ownership of those. We, we need to work on what we're doing with those, we're aggressively trying to, to move them back into the community when, when there seems to be the ability to do so. But we have a lot of work ahead of us, and, uh, the people that are affected in the, in the hardest-hit communities see a lot of that work, but as a whole in Lorraine County, I don't think they, they understand all of the work that's going into this in the last couple of years. And, and like the Stormwater District, I wanna add something, I may, like the Stormwater District and the Transportation Improvement District, and, and, and the work we do with the land bank and into the Port Authority, we have, we, we don't, we do that, we just absorb that into all of the work we were already doing. There wasn't a lot of resources that hired, uh, the land, the Port Authority already had people over there, we, we've just put that work right into the existing structure. One of the, and that structure that was depleted in two thousand ten because we never brought anybody back from all those layoffs in two thousand ten. I, I hear a lot of things out there about our government, and I respect people's opinion, but they should really come up here and spend a little time, and, and see all these things. Uh, I, I certainly don't think that Don was doing stormwater work a few years ago, and we weren't, and Pat wasn't doing land bank work a few years ago, and I, I darn well wasn't overseeing it all, uh, and it just goes on and on, and I get a little frustrated and, and, but I respect people's opinion, but I would just ask that they come visit with us and, and, and look at the stuff we're doing. I think they'll go away a much better, much better informed and appreciative of, of some of the work being done here.
Thank you. Uh, also, uh, as I said Friday, I was at, uh, the organizational meeting for the County Commissioners Association, I sit on the board there, did the regular stuff, just opening up here, but being it's a new legislature, Commissioner Lundey, there's a lot of new people down there, so they have to, you know, be met with, talked to about all the issues that are ongoing. We're working closely with the Secretary of State on replacing electronic voting machines, and with all the county's Department of Administrative Services is actually out doing an interview process with the people who make the machines, and,
The state's gonna pay for all that, right?
Department of Administrative Services out interview process.
Was that the joke of the morning?
To determine cost, pricing information.
That sounds like to be a secret.
Well, our work is, if we can get it at least like they did with the eBooks for us, that's a significant cost if we're all wrapped up sixty or seventy percent by the state of Ohio, because there is no more money from the feds on the HAVA.
When, when you guys are working on that down there, would you keep in mind, and, and seed funding is really important, but the maintenance on that stuff is what's crushing us. The, the, uh, we, we, every time we get money for equipment, we breathe a little sigh, and then we spend the next several years figuring out how we're gonna pay all those maintenance agreements and replacement costs.
Yeah, well, just keep on paying them. They're not looking at any of that, they're looking for actually the equipment hard cost, but all in for it, including the software and setup, but there's nothing for the ongoing maintenance of it, uh,
We have to do that before the next presidential election, right? Don't they want the new equipment in place before the next?
Well, actually, they want it before the next governor, because all of us are timed out. From the original HAVA, Help America's Vote Act, where the federal government came in and paid for all the new voting equipment, or a large portion of it. From the original HAVA Help America's Vote Act where the federal government came in and paid for all the new voting equipment, a large portion of it. There's none of those dollars and everything is timed out past ten years, even though everybody's limping along with it. So we're trying to figure out, and the problem is there's no consistency through all the counties. Some counties, you know, if they need a hundred machines, they want to have a hundred and fifty. And some, if they need a hundred machines, they want two hundred. So there's no equitable cost. So they're asking the boards of commissioners and their election boards to work cooperatively. We actually have a committee I serve on down there that is the two boards working together on this issue. So there was testimony in the past two weeks talking about how that's going to go forward. Indigent Defense fought for a decade to get it up to fifty percent reimbursement. It's now down to forty-four percent. There's a huge decline in the non-general fund revenue from fines and fees. It was off over half a million dollars since October every month, so they're looking over that. Be working with the criminal justice people at the state, the public defender's office. And Nathan Manning is the chair in the House. Where this, where it was, yeah, Terry Boos was before that we got this up to fifty percent, so I'll have to work with Nathan.
Recognizing that while this is going on, the state has passed additional issues with the appointed counsel in the domestic relations that we have to deal with because there's new requirements there, which is going to cost some money.
Well, it's been, yes, and that was one of our discussions, the domestic relations toward is taking up an inordinate amount versus the past on what indigent attorney fees are because now the child in the house gets an attorney, the guardian in late them gets an attorney, the mother and or the father both get. And Jerry can probably expound on that being in the prosecutor's office, but there's more legal being expected.
Let me point out, so we, we don't think we're bad mouthing anybody. Judges have a little, little ability not to do this.
Right, no, it's the law.
The, you know, we have some fine people over there, but they're, they have requirements on them. People think that the judges, for the most part, make independent decisions, but they have laws they have to follow too as judges. And these appointments are required.
Then it comes out of our general fund, so I mean, those numbers go up.
I will be, I will be meeting with the Domestic Court Administrator and, and the Bar Association to discuss those matters. I think it's in the book for, in the next week or two. So I'll brief you back on, on how those discussions go.
I probably want to jump in on that, I mean, just from what I'm doing at the state level.
That's fine, that'd be great.
Have Sandy send that to Tony.
Sure.
Also, significant issues going on, again, public safety and stuff, the jail operating cost because of the mentally ill and the addicted inmates. There is advocacy groups working down there with the state. And they've come up with a plan to establish six mental health crisis centers and nine withdrawal management centers, but don't say detox. My family have some who medicate money and stuff, again, I'm not.
That sixteen bed rule maybe.
Yeah, who knows, but they're working on trying to get that. There's meetings with Department of Corrections, along with the Senate and the House Caucus staffs, trying to figure out a way to get someplace to put these people at state funded. And again, you, that process I'm not as familiar with. Again, infrastructure, workforce investment, they're talking about ways of bringing the family and children's first councils, modernizing them. There's new processes at the legislature, well, the staff are working on to change how we're going to do our children's family first. I probably defer to you. Is that multi-system youth, the youth are in multiple programs throughout the state and having it all coordinated or collaborated to?
The children and family first model, it first started being developed in the late nineties. And it had a lot of support from, from the state. And then of course, the Help Me Grow came in and that had a lot of support initially. The, the genesis, the, the thinking at the time was really, really kind of cool. That was that you had multiple agencies such as Department of Disabilities, Children's Services, Mental Health, Addiction Services, all kind of working in the same playground, but not working together in that playground. And the, the model of children and family first was supposed to bring stakeholders to the table so that they would combine resources and, and not be duplicating services throughout the community. It really hasn't significantly achieved that success. The Help Me Grow program is, is, has been a really fine program and it has brought money into the community to deal with mostly teen pregnancies and gets, get a resource into the home. It's proven that if they, we can get a resource to them early, prenatal vitamins, prenatal visits, a little bit of parenting teaching and things like that, that, that they'll be much more successful in the home environment. But, but the collaborative piece has not really materialized on any significant level. We still continue to maintain significant silos within each areas and they're deciding what, you know, what they want to do. They occasionally talk about doing stuff together, like comprehensive case management and, and you know, cradle to grave mentality with providing services. I wish I could tell you that we did much better than any other community, but we've, we've lacked what I consider a huge success in that area, just like all the other communities.
Along with funding cuts, Jim.
Well, that's what I was going to say. The reality is that they don't provide enough funding for, for the children family first to do its job and to bring in enough people to try to make those things a reality. Plus, we have to have some tools with regard to the funding that's being sent to those agencies so that if they're not participating, we have the ability to force them to the table in a, in a better collaborative manner than, than we can right now. You've seen the change in the DD model with the state. They're, they're really, they're really putting some pressure on them. They, they don't want them to be a provider of services. They really want them to get into a model of, of overseeing services rather than directing services.
Sort of like mental health.
Sort of like mental health. So I, these changes are probably necessary. I just hope that they don't pull the funding completely out of Help Me Grow. We've seen reductions. I, I think it's a very valuable program in the homes. And, and it would be a shame if we, we don't have something to get into these homes initially. And we also, you know, do visits to hospitals when, when the children are born and so forth. It makes a huge difference. I just know when they talk about change, they usually just collapse everything and move past it. And then we have to figure out how we're going to provide those services. Is, is CCO coming in on that? Are they weighing in on that at all?
Yes, they've got some staff down there. They haven't done any, there's no testimony, it's just been worked through staff. There's no legislation yet, but that's one of the priorities that the departments are talking about how to handle these things, so.
Okay, great, thanks.
It's an update. Also, that's enough of the commissioner stuff from Frank. Condolences to Officer Fane and his family yesterday, another tragedy on Route Two. Another officer down, so again, tragic. So keep them in your thoughts and prayers. That's the end of my report.
I guess he was out trying to put some flares on the road when he was struck.
That's what it said.
You know, when I was in Columbus, we always worked on trying to increase the penalties for those who drove too fast through construction zones. And it's, it's so frustrating because it seems like regardless of what you do and regardless of the signs being posted, regardless of how high the fines or the penalties are, whether people were wearing all kinds of gear that you can clearly see them, people just, just don't slow down, so.
Well, I used to see the signs in Pennsylvania when my kids lived up there and it was kind of neat when they had road signs that says, slow down, my mommy works out here. Or my daddy works out. You'd see those signs, you'd go, wow, you know, sort of.
I haven't seen one like.
In Pennsylvania, they were all the time, all the way up and down, eight.
Wow.
I see a lot of people aren't even moving over for.
Stop vehicles.
Yeah, yeah. There are ambulance or police or a fire truck coming down, are you supposed to get over?
Well, they stopped seventeen or eighteen between Amherst, Fifty-Eight, Middle Ridge, when they did that test run about three months ago. They stopped seventeen or eighteen people that didn't stop. Yeah, so please be careful when driving.
I don't quite understand that attitude.
I don't either.
The, the, I see it on the highways, people don't move over, they don't seem to slow down. They don't have appreciation for our first responders out there. It's, it's a real shame.
To many people in a hurry.
Yeah.
Saw that awful videotape of that, that truck that got too close to that salt truck in Utah and went right over the cliff. Yeah, yeah, even people get too close to the, the ODOT vehicles as well too, so or city vehicles, whatever the case may be. Yeah, just wanted to follow up clarification when we were talking about the collection of the, the unpaid property tax there, that nine point three million. I just always stress to people, we get a dollar sixty-three for every hundred. And, you know, because we've had, and I've seen the articles over and over again. I've had people stop me to say, well, if you would just collect the unpaid property taxes, then you wouldn't need any more revenue. And why aren't you collecting that? And I know I was talking to the auditor the other day, some gentleman, it wrote him and was asking, he lived in Amherst. I think he owned about a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar house and had some, I don't know, four thousand dollars in property taxes. And he was indicating, you know, more than three thousand of that went to the schools. I think the city of Amherst got about three hundred and fifteen dollars. I think we got a whopping hundred dollars, or whatever the case may have been. But, so, yeah, a lot of folks just don't realize how that all breaks down. But, you know, the majority of that goes to your schools and that's where it needs to be. Had the opportunity to attend a town hall that took place in South Elyria, the South Elyria Town Hall. That was quite a coordinated effort between the, the city and Councilman Marcus Madison, along with the Urban League and Frank Whitfield. And Dr. Jama was also there updating everybody on, on the schools as well as the Elyria Public Library. It was just a great turnout, awesome turnout, a lot of good conversation. I had the opportunity to attend the recent Township Association meeting. And, you know, we did have some discussion about the SWAC projects as well too. And folks there were very pleased with those. And I know that our own Jerry Ennis makes all those meetings and, did you want me to?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That affects us.
Yeah, it, it's funny because one of, no, no, that's okay. Because one of the items I was going to bring up here is, you know, having great concern about, I don't know what else to say. I'll call it pushing of falsehoods about, you know, supposedly all this voter fraud that took place in the country in the presidential race. I'm, you know, very concerned about that. We worked very hard in Columbus to make sure that individuals would have access to voting and that we could get as many people to vote as possible. And I'm concerned that when people are out there promoting conspiracy theories, the clearly Secretary of States across the country, even our own Secretary of State John Huestead has said there's no evidence of widespread voter fraud. I even checked with our own Paul Adams. We had one hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-six voters who cast votes. He said that they had one case that they sent to the Secretary of State's office by an individual who they believe was a non-citizen who attempted to vote. The ballot was not processed, I guess it must have been a provisional ballot. But it's just, you know, we've got a lot of important issues facing this county, or country and county and state moving forward. And it's, it's, it's tough to have, you know, credibility when you're really going to need it if you're pushing falsehoods. So I hope that that'll come to an end. Also, I know that there's been concern and when I saw the article too, I was a little concerned too. And I guess, Don, it sounds like you've received phone calls because there was stories out there that threw an executive order that they were shutting down on some of the, the grants from the EPA. And do you want to come to the podium and maybe explain if, if that's going to have a, an impact on us? I know people are trying to make statements and politics and being political. But, you know, as I was telling Commissioner Kalo the other day, I said, you know, when you race to make judgments, I found out in Columbus that the smallest change in a policy or a program can have a devastating impact on something that you didn't even foresee. But I know that the concern was that the, the new president threw an executive order was, I guess, putting a freeze on some EPA grants.
Correct. We, we received a phone call, a couple of phone calls. And also, we're able to see in various news publications that any contracts that are outstanding are being considered by the US EPA are currently being put on hold. Now, how that directs us or impacts us directly is we had just recently received word that we were awarded a US EPA Brownfield area wide planning grant of two hundred thousand dollars to target the Lorraine waterfront that actually overlaps very nicely with what we're doing on the Transportation Livable Communities Initiative and allows us to continue to work off the success that the Lorraine Port Authority had done along the Black River. So currently, that project, we, we do not have a contract. I do not know when we will get a contract or if we will get a contract. I can say that we have one, two, three, four, five other US EPA funded grants right now. And I have been able to draw down funds. They have not closed those out. And it is my understanding, my belief, that those will not be impacted because they are already under contract and encumbered. And I expect that to stay that way. But currently, we have that area wide planning grant, two hundred thousand dollars for the county. That is on hold. We also have a six hundred thousand dollar grant application pending for the next round of assessments that we've been doing throughout the county that.
That's our, our Brownfields grant, correct?
Correct.
You know, we had, we got several hundred thousand for the first round and we've been doing a lot of phase ones and phase twos.
Yes.
Let, let, let me say that we've used those Brownfield dollars to enhance economic development with companies. They're, they're looking for sites, they're looking to expand on sites. Banks have really tightened up, they're requiring phase ones, phase twos before they'll even look at potentially contributing economically to expansions of businesses. So strategically, this has become a weapon and arsenal for retention and expansion. We just did Cameco on a phase two, right? We did the phase one first and we did the phase two. And as you know, we're, we're, we're working somewhat behind the scenes because we really don't operate a lot in Lorraine, but we've taken a real foothold there with CDVG revolving loan and, and also doing a phase one, phase two to support the, I think they're expanding by a couple hundred jobs there, right?
Uh, two hundred jobs and sixty thousand square foot expansion plus about twelve million dollars in machinery and equipment.
We've only worked on that a couple of years.
So, so a lot of this grant isn't just cleanup. It has to do with directly impacting economic development within the communities. We're assisting the businesses best we can, we're trying to do cleanups. Also, we did the phase one and two on the old trucking on Baumhart Road, right? Are we doing now, looking at the tanks?
We're looking at getting the tanks removed there, being able to use this assessment, being able to determine whether or not there was any leaking. Also, we did a phase one and two in Sheffield Village in Lorraine to be able to allow a bank to make consideration of lending money to allow a new warehouse to be constructed in Sheffield Village.
And, and I think the tanks, the tanks on, on that property, I think there's a several ten thousands of contaminated groundwater that's leaked in, right?
We are now testing the water to determine whether or not it exceeds the standard.
So a lot of this work has to be done in these communities. We've been successful at bringing dollars back here. I just hope that, like with the state dollars, that the, the spigot isn't twisted closed because we still have to do this work, still have to provide these services. We still have to get people to want to come here and we still have to clean up the things that have been left here by others. So that's why I handed that to you, Commissioner Wundy, off the cuff there. I think it's an important issue to discuss.
Yeah, I was wondering about that. And, and my concern is whether we're going to receive any information or much information because basically the other day, there was a gag order placed on EPA to be able to communicate about programming or things that are going on. And we do still live in America, right? So, you know, these gag orders that are imposed on different departments, that's, that's quite troublesome. You know, we've, we've seen those incidents in government and states and communities and it, it doesn't go over well. So it's, it's a concern as to how we'll be able to get the information. I don't know if possibly through our congressional leaders or our state senators, you know, if those individuals can possibly give us some information, US senators.
Early in, in President Trump's campaign, he, he promised to decimate the EPA. They were, they were part of the dark axis that he was, he was after. Now, I don't know how true that is, you know, we, we had a lot of rhetoric during the campaign. And I, I'm not going to weigh in on whether the, what they do with the EPA or not, but the, the work that's being done with the funding through there still needs to continue. At this level, we just need that type of assistance, whether it's the EPA or another agency. So I hope that these things start flowing again quickly because we could, we could find ourselves in a bit of a bind. Have we exhausted that first grant?
Uh, we are actually at the point now where we are doing a re-accounting to see how much dollars, if any, we have left to spend. We're, if we haven't spent it all or committed it all, we are very close to that. Last time we gave a report out, we had about sixty thousand. I know Cameco was over thirty thousand dollars that we invested in that project. And there've been a couple of other small ones.
Is that including the, the phase two?
That's set aside for the phase two.
You remember what we paid on the phase one?
Phase one was about five thousand dollars. We did about twenty-six thousand, I believe, for the phase two on Cameco. And then we still had another thousand dollars of additional assessment that didn't fit into either bucket.
Just for clarification, as we talked about these things, we also always require a call back from the companies we're assisting should they not go forward with the plans. We don't like to have public funds invested in those things and they're not carried forward. Clearly, if they went bankrupt or something like that, that wouldn't be recoverable. But if they just changed their mind, we haven't done all this work with taxpayers' dollars for nothing. So we do, just to make people understand, we do watch those dollars pretty tightly, but, but we need them to work with companies and do the cleanups in, in Lorraine County. Thanks, Don.
You're welcome, thank you.
That completes my report.
Board of Correspondents.
Um, to waive the reading.
Second.
Hi.
Mr. Kalo.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Public comment.
Anybody wishing to come up and speak to the board about any topic?
Come on, John, you're up, this, you drove in from Camden or Brighton, where are you at?
Did you have something, did you have something for us today?
Do you actually know where that part of the county is?
Of course I do, man, you can't beat the bright lunch at the church there at eighteen.
I'm just happy to see my local government at work.
Okay, all right, good, well, thank you for coming today.
Well, at least you said government and work in the same breath.
Well, seeing no one, then I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the county administrator.
Second.
Housky.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine thirty at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us.